All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council to order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, do your roll call. We have all council members present. Do we have any public comment this evening? Hearing done, we'll move on to adopting the agenda. Any modifications?
Mayor and Council, we do not have any modifications, but we do have one that was posted as of Monday, so I'll just bring to light that we have another business item that was added and republished the basket for item K eight, Whiskey Road Speed Update and Discussion.
Motion to approve the agenda with addition.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For proclamations, we have the 2024 Jubilee Days Parade Mayor's Choice Trophy Award that's going to Isani Family Dental. I have the award right here. I don't know, is there anybody here to accept it or no, or not today? Well, we'll have to make sure we get that to them. Okay. I think they're float if I didn't, of course, I was in the parade, so I didn't see it myself, but I was told it was really good. It was kind of an under the sea sort of theme, I think, right? It was, it looked good. I saw pictures of it and stuff like that, so, yeah. All right, for council meeting minutes, I guess, we'll move on to next. Here we've got July sixteenth, 2024, the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. We've got the June eighteenth, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes, and the July sixteenth, 2024 City Council Budget Work Session Minutes.
Motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. For announcements, we've got the primary election coming up Tuesday, August thirteenth, seven AM to eight PM. We've got the City Council Canvassing Board Meeting Thursday, August fifteenth, at 2024, at to be decided, I think probably going to be six o'clock. We'll see what we decide here this evening, but I think we're leaning towards six o'clock that night. We have the Committee of the Whole Meeting Tuesday, August twentieth, at five PM. We have the Planning Commission Meeting the twentieth, at six PM, and the City Council Meeting also the twentieth, at seven PM. And we also have our City Council Budget Work Session on Tuesday, the twentieth. That'll be immediately following the regular seven PM City Council Meeting. We have our Park and Recreation Board Meeting Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, at six PM. Do we have any council committee reports?
I have one for the school board. So the last meeting they had, they had a budget discussion. So they went through the numbers from last year and expected numbers from this year. Something I thought that was interesting, they served roughly fifty percent more meals last year because of Governor Walz's unfunded mandate on free lunches for everybody, or free lunch and breakfast, actually, which is good and bad, but unfortunately, they don't have fifty percent more staff or fifty percent more time in the day, so their staff has been pretty worked, pretty hard. Like I said, it's good and bad. And then there's another thing that they're facing that's hitting their budget, and people did see it on their taxes this year. It's the summer unemployment, which I think is a little bit silly. That was another Walz policy that was pushed through to give school workers summer unemployment, which cost the school district around four million dollars. So they have to get that from somewhere. What's not from the state, it's from our residents. So you see that on your tax statement, you know, remember that when you vote. Some of these people down at the state are making our lives more expensive, so. And then I had another, I had some concerns, or a couple of people reached out about the Arts and Arts Academy schools. So I kind of wanted to ask you guys about how you felt about me attending those, maybe every other month, and then the nine eleven school district every other month, just to kind of see what's going on there. It was recommended to me by somebody that's pretty strong voice in the community, so I thought I would run that by you guys if you think it's worth it for us to go to the Science and Arts Academy in Isani here. If anybody has any strong feelings, a or nay on that?
I don't know. I mean, I don't have any strong opinions, but I think it wouldn't hurt to at least attend, you know, a meeting and see how it goes and see if you think it was worth your while and that kind of thing.
That's kind of what I was gonna plan on doing.
I don't know if you need to do every other, but maybe once a quarter or once every six months or something. It wouldn't hurt to, it wouldn't hurt to, you know, see what's going on there, too, so.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with that sort of thing.
Mayor and Council, if we do want to add that as another committee that a council member would be attending, we would need to bring that resolution forward for an amendment.
Would that, so I wasn't going to add it as a committee. I was thinking that I would just rotate. So right now, it's labeled as school board liaison, I believe. So it doesn't specify which school, so we would even need to add anything to it? It's pretty vague already, so I was just gonna, I thought I could just go every other.
It's an arts academy, private school. It really doesn't have anything to do with his tax dollars. Those people that are paying for the kids to go over there, that's their thing.
Right.
It's not a tax dollar.
Yeah, it's just in the city limits, so it's.
Yeah, but it's, but it.
It is a charter school. It is a public school and free to attend, so just.
I thought it was a private school.
I thought so, too.
Yeah, I mean, I know it was a charter school, but yeah, so I think it, I think, and it's in the city limits. I mean, I think if they're welcome to, if they want us to be there, or at least, you know, I mean, it can't hurt, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to add another committee.
No, no. It'd just be taking the place of a school board meeting at the nine eleven. A lot of the school board meetings at Cambridge are, I gotta say, rather bland, so not a whole lot going on, which is good.
Councilmember Merrill is correct. It does not specify the Cambridge Isani School District school liaison appointment, so I leave that up to the council's discretion.
Okay. And I did have this as a cow item from last month, but we didn't get to it, so I just figured I'd bring it up quick here.
Yeah, I mean, go to one and let us know how it goes and, you know, we'll talk about it again in the future. But yeah, I'm fine with you going to one.
Okay, sounds good. And then I have another brief update. The chamber meeting, the last chamber meeting, there wasn't a whole lot of substance related to the city of Isani. So I just wanted to talk about, last night, we had PD ribbon cutting that the chamber was a part of that went really good, over two hundred attendees, I would guess. I know we ran out of food and drinks and everything, so that was good, really good turnout. I was happy to see the community out and support the police. I don't know if Travis wants to add to this, but I thought I'd give him the chance. It was a good event, good weather, so.
No, we were just pleasantly pleased with the community presence there. We went through two hundred hot dogs and two hundred waffles. I'm not sure how many attendees there were, if you count one hot dog per attendee. We did run out, so there was a few more. So no, it was greatly attended by our community, so. And then we had National Night Out Parties after that that we attended, and those were good attended. I always encourage every neighborhood to have their neighborhood block party because the intent is to get to know your neighbor and who you live by and stuff like that. So, yeah, I was pleasantly surprised with the attendance, so we appreciate the community's support.
And I was gonna say, with that sort of attendance, maybe we could consider an event like that every National Night Out? Something like that, maybe, maybe rotate between Public Works and PD or something and just kind of get people to, talking with our staff and community.
We had the same discussion in our office, just because it was more attendees than we expected, and it was, we didn't lose or degrade from the neighborhood parties because of the timeframe, the four to five thirty, which I think we do exactly the same thing, so we don't, I don't want to do an event during the same time that you'd have your neighborhood block parties because my opinion is National Night Out or Night to Unite is to get to know your neighbors in your neighborhoods, not at the city park. So I think we can accomplish both tasks under that structure. So it's something we'll entertain and look into for next year, yes.
And that's all I have.
All right. Sounds good. Yeah, that was a fun, that was really a fun event last night, for sure. All right, any other council committee reports? We'll move on to our first business item then, K one, An Ordinance Amending Chapter four forty-five, Section eleven, to remove the Highway sixty-five overlay district.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the Committee of the Whole started this discussion just discussing the various restrictions that the Highway sixty-five overlay district places on parcels along the corridor, limiting some of the uses as well as increased design standards. Other concerns were voiced by businesses that currently exist within the city limits, as well as in the tier one zoning district that are grandfathered in that are not permitted their use within the corridor, so they can't grow or expand their businesses currently. And so the committee determined to request the removal of the Highway sixty-five overlay district. The Planning Commission then held a public hearing in regards to removing the Highway sixty-five overlay district on the July sixteenth meeting, and without a lot of public comment at all, except for those in favor, they did recommend to move forward with this, and here we are now.
All right. Any discussion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K two, the Resolution to Consider Amending the 2020 Comp Plan Text to Remove the Overlay District.
Along with removal of the overlay district and changing the zoning map, we have to amend the comprehensive plan text. The map is also part of the comprehensive plan, and that involves a few pages. Page sixty-one of the plan removes the language, which states specifically, in order to ensure the quality of development, the city has placed an overlay district on parcels with direct visual access to the highway. On page sixty-three, it removes the language that says the city has recognized this and placed, or sees the Highway sixty-five as a gateway into the city, and development along there sets the tone for highway commercial area, removing the language that says the city has recognized this and has placed a zoning overlay district that regulates and encourages quality development in new buildings and developments. Removes that sentence and removes an additional sentence on page eighty-eight, which says the city has repaired and adopted a Highway sixty-five overlay corridor that is guiding design buildings and developments in the corridor. And then along as what we, with what we normally do, we did fix a few typos and errors throughout. And again, this was discussed at the public hearing held on July sixteenth and approved, recommended approval seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the changes to the comp plan?
Motion to approve. If you do one, you have to do two anyway, so. Same thing with three.
I know, yeah, but I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. And moving on to K three, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Code, Chapter four forty-five, Section ten, Special Purpose Districts Creating the B I T Business Industrial Transitional District.
And good evening again. Along with the removal of the Highway sixty-five overlay district, we still recognize that some of the zoning along the district still didn't allow for the expansion or growth of these businesses that are in the tier one district specifically, but along the corridor. So a new zoning district was created or discussed, and that is the B I T Business Industrial Transitional District, which will allow these industrial type businesses to expand in their current locations, but could be flexible as the city of Isani becomes more urban in nature to allow for commercial businesses in those locations. And so the map has been amended, creating this district. We did felt like the comprehensive plan still upheld the beliefs that are, you know, put forward within creating this district, so we didn't think we needed to have any more changes addressed throughout the comprehensive plan.
Sounds good. So, yeah, I mean, basically what this is gonna do is it's gonna allow for expansion of industrial businesses that are existing, and it opens up the area of, this area of town for all kinds of different businesses and stops holding businesses that are coming in to an unreasonable level of design standards, so. And those standards of design have not been applied fairly necessarily in the past either. You know, if you had a big business come in, they could do kind of whatever their business model was. And then if you had the small mom and pop come in, then they were held to these higher standards. And so we wanted to remove that. Just for one quick example, you know, I'm sure maybe some of you have been here and heard this before, but Knife River Concrete had to actually build a building outside of the sixty-five overlay zoning district to add on to their operation because they were, even though they were there currently, they weren't able to expand their business, so. And that's been years ago now that that's happened, so this has been something that has really been a passion of mine personally to get this fixed and, and to, you know, the businesses that are here that have been part of this community, and then to make them suffer because of where they happen to be located was, was something that always bothered me, so. So I'm excited to see this get passed. Any other discussion?
I agree completely.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second, I think, I think, all right, all right.
I want to participate.
All right, and I have a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K four, the well number four, Water Supply Improvements and Engineering Services.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is continuing our previous couple discussions on this well four. Last time we left with the intent to determine what the preferred improvement would be, either kind of looked at remaining three considerations, whether we would try and rehab well one to enlarge it, whether we would try and place another well as close to another one as possible to utilize existing infrastructure as much as possible, and then lastly, where an ideal location would be if with those first two didn't work. So step one was that evaluating well number one. It is a smaller well where we could more or less take out a large portion of it, rehab it, drill a new larger well, bring in new pumps, and get it to have a higher capacity, but it currently has more life left, so it didn't really look like it made sense to take it out when ultimately we're gonna want four wells to max out the treatment plant. The drilling another well next to an existing well, given our sands and the drawdowns that we were seeing, we were finding we'd prefer to stay a thousand feet away from another well. And so if you look at that figure, that was with this memo, we kind of identified or we evaluated about twelve different locations. We got it down to about four that fell in kind of that sweet spot of a thousand feet away plus. But then we also tried to factor in location with land ownership, so we wouldn't have to buy land or obtain it. Also minimizing piping that would be needed, and we settled on what is called four G on that figure, which is on the east side of East Dole Boulevard, a parcel that the city currently owns. That's two parcels north of the UPS site. We'd basically be able to place it, kind of we'll call it in the corner of that parcel, and then still be able to sell that lot as a developable lot and just cut off a corner of it for utility easement at that time. So now that we've kind of come down to our preferred alternative or recommended option, the next step would be to actually move into design, you know, permitting, make sure it's all gonna work, make sure we have a buildable recommended option, and take it out for bids. And so that's what this next step is in this process, if we do want to continue.
Thanks for the clarification on that. That was my one question was, can we still use the lot? Because on these, on this plot here, it's right in the smack dab in the middle.
Yeah, it's the size of the scale of the figure.
Okay.
It was basically just put one in this parcel. You might see like four E was kind of in the center of another parcel that it was more just the, does this parcel work or this parcel, not the physical placement. We would go with kind of the shortest distance we can, you know, so most likely the southwest corner of that parcel without being obstructive to a builder, you know, or the development of the lot. They do have to be fifty feet from a property line, so it can't be like wedged right up next to it. But the well house could be closer to the property corner, but the well point has to be that little bit further away, so. Those would be those kind of final details that we would work out if we were gonna move forward.
Would it, would it make more sense to have it on the northeast corner? It looks like that's a wetland back there, so that's probably never gonna be developed necessarily.
So maybe, you know, with, with wetlands, we don't want to be in any kind of flood risk at our wells, so we would have to be built up enough to be out of that problem. So if we got survey and figured out things along those lines, maybe we could do something like that, but we wouldn't be really able to fill a wetland to get it up anyway. Plus, if we go to that corner, then we have about, you know, three hundred more feet, five hundred more feet of pipe we'd have to install, and, you know, because this is a raw water line that has to be separately piped to the treatment plant. It, it needs its own separate line all the way, and so the closer we are, the less expensive.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not handcuffing East Dole Boulevard in the future with, you know, any sort of development, sort of like how we're dealing with, when we had the roundabout, we had that, the lift station right there, so it kind of handcuffed our options there. I don't, I want to make sure that we think in long term with this, because that well's gonna be there for a hundred years or more, so.
Yeah, yeah, and the southeast corner was actually a corner I was thinking about, and I still am, because then it's completely tucked behind whatever development would want to happen.
Yep.
But then we would need a driveway access to it, to get to it, and, you know, then there's more costs with that along with the pipe, and it's just, that would be that final sighting that we would do. It's just, at this stage, it's just, you know, we believe we found that spot that'll work, getting that Mount Simon, get that fourth point, get our firm capacity up, and, you know, and meet those criteria. It's kind of the stage we're at right now.
I'm not convinced totally at this point that, that this needs to go forward. I, we came out of a really bad drought in twenty-one. It continued into twenty-two. We're doing better now. We're just seeing, starting to see better numbers. We really haven't worked on water conservation, especially with the top ten percent. And I think we need to at least try some other things first, it's my opinion, before we go ahead and spend three million dollars on this. I know that we do need it, you know, for the future. I get that. And I do know that at times our water system has been taxed and was working overtime, but it was such a small percentage of the time that this has happened that I'm, I just, I'm not against it. I just need more convincing before I would vote to go forward with it. I was looking at our ordinances. I don't even, I haven't seen any ordinances on water sprinkling, like automatic. Do we have any on the books?
Are you asking if we have ordinances to require people to have automatic sprinklers? Like with a rain sensor? We don't have anything like that, no.
Okay, do we have anything like, well, there's a state statute where you have to have it installed on your automatic watering system, so if it rains, it automatically shuts off. Also, we could push, they have water sensors, so they actually go in the earth that tie into your automatic watering system that will actually keep it from turning on. So people might have it on a timer, and so it's getting watered every third day, but if the sensor reads it, and they run about one hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty dollars apiece, they're not that expensive to install in these residents if they wanted to do that themselves, or if we can encourage them through some type of incentive to do that, because when I look at that ten percent and they're using, what is it, forty percent of the water or something like that? If, if we can get that trimmed down, I mean, it looks like our city's in really good shape, but what percentage we can get that down, I'm not sure. If we won't, I don't know if time is of an essence to move this project forward, but if we have a little bit more time, maybe we should try a few more things.
I want to correct, I want to correct, in a minute, Mr. Heeman. Irrigation companies are required to put a rain sensor on.
Okay.
But I am going to tell you, the rain sensors that they install don't work. They don't. I've watched, I had an irrigation system in one of my properties, and it rained, and it still came on, and it was raining. So I brought up a few years ago where we would give people incentives to tie their irrigation into Wi-Fi, and it, I can't remember at the time that the cost was, that we would, you know, we'd pay fifty percent of it, and they would automatically, it goes by the Wi-Fi, so with your weather app on your phone, if it says it's gonna rain, it won't allow it to come on. I know some people that have them, and they say they work fabulous. That they, it's on lake property or whatever, and they say they work fabulous.
Sure.
And when I do my irrigation, I do want to put the Wi-Fi, and I don't care if the city's reimbursing me or not, I still want to put it on there because I know those rain sensors that are installed, they mount up on your soffit, in your gutter, whatever, they don't work. They still, it's, they still fire even though it's raining out. So, so they, as an irrigation company, they do, are required to put them in. The city is not required, maybe not requiring it, but as an irrigation company, they are required for their irrigation license.
Well, we should make sure and at least put that in ordinance. I mean, well, it's state statute, so you're probably right. They're gonna have to follow state statute to do it, but we should clarify on ordinance, too.
I do want to add something to you when you talk about the drought situation, particular a house I was working, I'm working on in Shoreview. The spring, they have a sump pump with a battery backup in their basement. That thing ran every five minutes.
Oh, yeah.
And as soon as our rain kind of slacked off, hadn't hear it ran at all. I was there today, and it was going off every five minutes, because we just got four inches of rain the last few days. So the water table's dropping. It does come back, but it's gonna drop. And as, as all of us know, August can be a very, very, very dry month, more so than July. So it's, you know, fortunately, we got that rain like we did, that quite a bit of rain that helped, but it's only gonna get worse. I don't disagree. I think we need that top ten percent to get more educated, no matter what we do, if we even went forward with this today, they still need to be educated. And that's, we gotta figure out where you're doing it.
I guess from, from my perspective, even if we started this process today, it wouldn't be done till twenty twenty-six. Now, we have a big apartment development coming in, and we have another smaller apartment, another housing development, so we're already past our firm capacity, so if we have a pump go down, we can't supply water confidently to our residents. So to me, there's no point kicking this can down the road because we're gonna have to have it. Now, if we need it next year, maybe not. The year after could be. The year after, we're probably more likely gonna need it, so.
I totally agree. I think if we can start securing some of this and getting this, this stuff done, we're not, we don't have to pay for the well being done. We need to get to that point.
Right.
So you're telling me that we've gained enough water capacity since this time last year that if the well went down again, we wouldn't have enough water?
No, it's not, it's not since last year. I mean, I think we looked at, Mike, you could kind of maybe help me out with some of the numbers here, but when we looked at our, our usage levels went up from, I think, twenty nineteen to now, like thirty-five percent. So it's not been just since one year time, but it's been in that, you know, typically, we look at this every four years, I think we talked about, right? Every five years. Well, in that time, it's just growing so, so much because we've had so many new homes come into town, and all of these new homes have these sprinkler systems. And like Luke said, if, and I think it's actually, the code is if your largest well goes down, you have to be able to supply at the peak time of the day, right, is what it is. And if that were to happen, right now, we're not able to do that. I mean, you know, that's peak of, the peak of the peakest day, right, in the summertime, something like that. But, but I mean, it's, it's definitely something where I think, like Luke said, too, I mean, it isn't, we're not actually gonna get it online until twenty twenty-six, and I think, boy, if you're gonna spend money on something, I mean, your water, your infrastructure, that's certainly a justified expense, so.
I agree.
But I still think we do, I still agree. I think we need to go after that ten percent, and that helps, and that may, may make this next well be a, just using numbers, not just saying, instead of a ten-year next one, it might make it a fifteen, maybe even more, if. But I still think we're gonna have to do it. There's just too much progress, progression going on in this town.
Mike, I know, I know we had talked about this, Mike. Have you had any luck talking to those top ten percent? I know you had planned to reach out to each of them. I know you started with some of the bigger ones. Have you had any luck or noticed any change in the numbers?
Yeah, so what I ended up doing before we came up with a plan to reach out is I, rather than just looking at that, I'd always kind of, we just picked July of twenty-three. We knew it was hot, it's the summer, okay, that was our sample. But before we came up with the list, I said, all right, I want to go back and look and see anybody that crossed fifty thousand, especially on their, you know, that I could understand was on irrigation, anyone who crossed fifty thousand gallons in any single month over the prior eighteen months, and then pulled that list. We ended up with a hundred and forty-one residences that at least one time did that. And I think we had, I think it was fifty-one non-residential units that hit that. We sent all the residential ones a letter, and staff, my staff is currently following up with phone calls, saying, hey, did you get the letter? Do you have any questions? Is there anything that you don't understand? Those kinds of things. Those calls have been going decent. For non-residential council, businesses, apartments, those types of things where people are actually there during the day, there's actually somebody in charge you could go talk to. The utility manager has taken that up, and that is going exceptionally well. Most, all of the businesses and apartments and whatever are glad that he's come, thanked him for the information, and asked him to come back again and bring additional charts and say, we want to see that we went from ten thousand gallons every. and asked him to come back again and bring additional charts and say, we want to see that we went from ten thousand gallons every single day to now just four thousand gallons every other day. We want to see proof that what we did actually did the thing we were hoping, because they've all recognized that, that it's a lot of money that you don't need to spend on water. Your grass can still be green doing twenty minutes every other day, doesn't need to, you know, you don't need to do twice a day every day. So those things have actually worked out really well, and I'm, Jim is kind of giving me the, you know, every, you know, once a week updates on that, and we're kind of working through that, but it's going to take a little bit of time to see how much water that might save once we get through that whole list. But it's also going to matter is, you know, does everybody stick to it? And I know for some of those key users that have really, really had, you know, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred thousand gallons in a month, for those ones, I know Jim has kind of kept an eye on after the fact, um, because we started with those first, of course. And so far, it looks very promising, but we, we are not going to know everything that we want to know before we need to decide on well four. And I, my recommendation would be is, there's no scenario where this is wasted money. And if you want to ensure that we're going to meet firm demand and meet future development needs, and I think Luke brings up a great point, is there's a lot of development already in the ground. And we're going to be building homes for a long time, and we are adding, what is it, three forty-nine unit apartments, a thirty-eight unit apartment, and two twenty-eight unit apartments? I mean, that, you know, if you had two point six people per average, per apartment, we may very well need a, a fourth well even sooner than you think.
That's not to mention all the new homes and all that kind of stuff besides, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on board, I think it's something that, uh, that needs to be done, I mean, that's going to be paid out of the water fund and, um.
Need negotiation room, Jason, on those prices? Three hundred and ten thousand?
What did you say, Mike?
As you say, the, the, the big difference here is, and this should be noted before we move forward, is, is what I'll present in the budget before. I didn't get this document till I'd already published, but, um, I had budgeted in my mind based on what I understood, and in my, uh, past experience, I budgeted two and a quarter. The, the range that I'd been given was one point five to three. I'm pretty confident it's not going to be three, but I'm also really confident it's not going to be one point five. And, uh, so two, two point two five is, is kind of where I have left it on the budget, that was also then what you saw reflected in the rate study presentation. This proposal, you know, we're probably looking at something closer to two point four, but at the same time, all of this gets bid. And we might get good bids, we might not, and we won't know until we bid it.
Material costs are going to go up and up and up every year.
Yep.
And, and I guess on the, the fees, they're hourly not to exceed, and so, you know, this like total design service number, you know, hopefully, we have no intent of getting to that number, because then we're writing off money if we've gone over anyway. And so if it turns out to be the first, you know, location that we try and make work, and everything works perfectly, and the designs go smoothly, and permitting, you know, is all just streamlined, you know, we certainly hope, you know, for everybody's sake, we're going to come in under even just with our fee number. That's just a cap, it's not a lump sum number, so.
I will say one thing, all these years I've been on this council, one time, one time, and that was in the, in the last year, couple of years, did Bolton Mink ever exceed their estimate, ever, in all these years that I've been here. It's only been once. And that, and that was be, huh? What's that?
That's to turn myself in, but it was this spring.
Yeah, it was, it was the one time.
I remember asking you about it at the time, because I was shocked that you could actually, you were wrong.
All these years that I've been up here, they've always came in under their budgeted amount, always.
So what would you say if we were to say we wanted to exceed a lower number? Not to exceed a lower number than what, what is written here?
Then you're just going to be pushing a can down the street, because you're going to have to start over all the process again if it doesn't happen.
Well, I mean, I guess if you're just trying to say the number should be lower, it would just be, then I would have to come back and ask for more if it turns out the first option didn't work, as opposed to we understand what we're getting into and we are going to deliver it, you know, under that number.
Okay. Got to ask.
Sure.
You got to ask, but sometimes it's going to cost you more than what we started out with.
And it, and it should be, I should probably note, as the, as the guy in the room that looks at all of these invoices as they go through, there are projects where, Jason, they do go over, and J, I literally see right off amounts, and Jason's like, well, that's, we capped. We're, we're stuck twenty grand, and that's Bolton and Mink's problem, not the city's. Um, I mean, when, when they give us an hourly not to exceed amount, I mean, fundamentally, what they're doing is they're splitting insurance cost, and saying, we're each going to take a portion of this, and I think it's a good deal, to be honest.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin, and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K five, the resolution to establish dates for canvas board meetings.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we will have a municipal primary election held on August thirteenth and a general election held on November fifth. In accordance with state law and city code, the city council must hold a canvas board meeting uh, to review and canvass the returns of the primary and the general election. The state law does have certain requirements of when those dates can take place. Uh, we do have a placeholder that was placed in the, in January, because we knew that this was an election year, to have the primary canvas board meeting on Thursday, August fifteenth, and a general election canvas board meeting on Tuesday, November twelfth, and we need to set the time for both of those meetings. Staff is recommending six P M., but it's open for discussion.
So it's Tuesday, November twelfth, what other meetings do we have that night?
We do not have any other meetings, the, the, the way that the dates fall, that it has to be between the third and the tenth date following the election, we don't, it doesn't fall, it falls on the off week.
Okay.
And with the primary, that one also falls, uh, in the same week, but it has to be later in the week, within two to three days of the primary election.
Make a motion to approve those dates at six P M.
Six P M. is good with me, too, yeah.
Sooner it's over with, the better.
He seconded.
Okay. I have a motion to approve that with the six P M. start on both of those meetings. And that was a motion by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Holmgren, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K six, resolution to consider approving the signage master plan and variance for Park Brook Apartments.
Keepers Inc. is requesting a variance of their, with their signage master plan approval for Park Brook Apartments. Um, the variance is a request to install signs in the R four zoning district that are larger than the zoning ordinance currently allows, um, but are consistent with the signs in the surrounding parcels in the B two general business district. The R four, R four zoning district allows for a twenty-four square foot sign that is up to four feet in height, and the request is to allow signs that are twenty-six square feet in size and up to six feet in height. Um, plans for all the signs are included within the packet, um, as well an overall site plan, um, of where the signs will be placed. The planning commission recommended approval of the variance and signage master plan at the public hearing held July sixteenth, um, twenty twenty-four.
That was a seven oh vote on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K seven, resolution to consider approving temporary zoning administration to be provided by Rum River Consultants.
Good evening again. As was approved at the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four council meeting, the current associate planner, Jordan Curtis, submitted her resignation from employment with her last day being tomorrow. Um, her job has been posted, and we have been receiving some applications and did start interviews, um, earlier this week. But during that time, while we're training and hiring a new person, um, it is important that we continue to offer services at a level that is acceptable to our residents. In our current contract with Rum River Consultants, it does allow us to access zoning permit administration at ninety-five dollars per hour and increase plan review fee from eighty percent to ninety percent for building permits where we currently do the zoning review for them. At this time, with the current workload, staff will need this assistance at least during the hiring and, um, early training periods. In the past year, with not rehiring the permit tech position, that's who would have covered and did a lot of the permit administration. Um, it's just not possible for myself to take on all of these duties, so.
Do we, do you have a rough guess on how many hours that we have made, say, is this going to be like a one-month thing, six-month thing? And then how many hours roughly, if you were to guess?
I would say the building permit zoning review from that perspective is, has been about ten percent of Jordan, uh, Jordan's current position. Um, the rest of it zoning is her, a majority of her position, so, um, I would guess for, my thought would be around three months of help, um, for this to happen. Mike said it is, I don't know if you want to speak on this at all?
Yeah, it, it's one of these deals where when you have staff turnover, um, you do have to fill the gap. And this resolution makes clear is that the intent is to authorize me to amend the budget based on the savings, right? So the, the journal entries that are not recording Jordan Curtis's pay can now be, those amounts could now be used to cover the contracted services.
Do you think it would cover it, though? It's like, ninety-five dollars an hour, it doesn't seem like it would be covered by her wages.
Well, it, no, remember, it's not just wages, it's all the savings that are incurred, right? Health insurance, payroll taxes, all of those things also occur, so you do get closer than you would think.
Okay.
Um, I think the, we'll never, we won't know ahead of time, um, it, it depends how many permits come in, right? August, September, yeah, there's probably going to be a bit of a rush, right? People are like, oh, Jesus, thing I've been trying to do all year, I haven't done anything with it, and summer's running out. But is it reasonable to expect that it probably slows down in October, November? Yeah, probably. Um, but we're just not going to definitively know that ahead of time. But we do need to avoid a scenario where people turning in an application that would need that review. I mean, we can't ask them to wait two to four weeks to find a way to do it internally. I mean, I, I don't want to field those calls, I.
Any other thoughts, guys?
I'm, I'm okay with it, I think it's, uh, it's just a stopgap, and we got to, you know, make sure we're providing the service for our residents, and we don't want to hold them up on projects that, you know, like you just said, they're running out of time. So now is not the time where we'd want to have them have to wait for longer than, than they should need to, so.
You're sure nobody in the city wants to take it over?
I don't think it's about wanting, it's about.
Or can?
Can is the problem, is, I mean.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve that, uh, from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Moving on to K eight, Whiskey Road speed update and discussion.
I asked for this one to be put on, I was contacted via email from a resident over in that area, and there was a second accident a week apart, so she, uh, she was, wanted some input, and I asked her if she wanted to come in, she said she would. I don't think she's here, though. So if anybody in the audience wants to speak on this.
I have something to add to, someone did reach out to me as well on there, uh, I think it's a, a pretty big concern. And I had read, Josie, what you had sent an email, and to me, it made it sound like we could kind of do whatever we wanted with our speed limits in town. I don't know if I read it wrong, um, but that, that's how it came out to me. If it's in the city limits, we can do, basically it says whatever you want with the speed.
The statute language?
Yeah. That's how I interpret it, I don't, I, those things are hard to read, so I, I could be totally wrong.
Yeah, no, I guess, yeah, the statutes that I had sent over are specifically saying how the county has jurisdiction over it, or the state has it.
Yeah, but then it says if it goes through a, a city jurisdiction, the city has the authority to change that. Maybe I read it wrong, but.
Yeah, no.
Can be read both ways.
Yeah, it can, it can be, so, it's one of those, another one of those gray areas, where we're told one thing forever, and now it's like, well, I don't, I don't know.
Those are only just two paragraphs that are extracted out of all the other statutes, so there's some definitions of words and things, but it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So this is, this is something that we discussed already after the first accident, of course, at length, at the committee of the whole meeting that followed that, uh, incident, so I know we talked about, you know, without getting too much in the weeds on it, but basically, if you wanted to lower the speed limit, you'd have to do a study to see if the traffic flow, I think it was eighty-five percent of, is that right? Eighty-five percent of the traffic, whatever speed they are going, is what it has to match, right? So potentially, you could actually have to raise the speed limit if that was happening. And I know we talked about getting a speed sign out there, have we done that yet, or? Okay, all right, because what we wanted to do is collect data so that we knew, okay, if we did a study, what would we expect our results to be, so maybe, you know, we don't want to get burned, and I, I think, actually, I think Bill, I saw a comment, uh, from him on Facebook the other day, and said Cambridge had tried to do that, and on Old Main Street, and they actually ended up having to raise the speed limit, right? Yeah, yeah, so, so we would not want to have that happen.
So silly. It's so silly.
I'll tell you, I live, I've lived in that area for many years. I get called a grandpa, because I drive thirty till I hit the city zone, I always have. I don't disagree that it needs to be changed. Unfortunately, the county has jurisdiction over that road. Just like the discussion with the sidewalk on finishing it there, it's the same thing. Unfortunately, the county has that jurisdiction. I would love to have it changed, trust me. I hear motorcycles, cars, everything fly by there. I live right on the, right on that corner. I hear it every time I'm at home.
Would it be possible to do the speed study in the winter and hope we get a lot of snow? I mean, you got to, you got to think creatively.
We'll do the speed study and then put our officer right there at the beginning of the study, right?
You got to think creatively, because that state statute is a bunch of BS.
Yeah.
And so on top of it, uh, the other statute that goes along with this speed study is the county has to hire MINDOT to do the speed study, like, for our city streets, I can run the speed study with my traffic engineers and have the results and say, okay, here's what we found, and then we can kind of decide if we want to act on it. Whereas those, there's literally, it's required that the county is the one that hires MINDOT to do a speed study on their roads that are under their jurisdiction, and then MINDOT is basically saying, if we do it, we're changing it. And, uh, and that's where this checking what kind of speeds we got is a great idea. However, we can do it where we aren't impacting the speeds when we do this check would be ideal. I don't know, can we even not have a readout?
That's why it hasn't been out yet, but it's going to go out without, just, don't get into many details, but that is why we, we're working on that piece of the puzzle, yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
So the county couldn't sign that right over to the city? And if we were to somehow convince the county commissioners that we wanted to do a study here, but we didn't want MINDOT to do it, could the county legally sign over some sort of something?
No, they, they have to have MINDOT do a speed study, if, I mean, if they maintain that jurisdiction, and as we talked, you know, that whole turnback topic, you know, isn't really a recommended process, and then the maintenance of the ownership and all that stuff, just like we've talked on, on Heritage, so, um, right now, I think we're on the right track on finding out where the speeds likely fall. Um, you know, on that other path, the traffic calming evaluation, I did talk with my traffic people, um, you know, not to keep throwing out costs on you guys, but they said for like five thousand bucks, they'd be able to do the full corridor from, you know, more or less Heritage to the, the, the S curve at the city limits to come up with what would be the recommended ways to calm traffic through that corridor. You know.
Now, is that something that we could talk to the county about, maybe a split cost or something on something like that, if we were to, I mean, it's their road, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's their road, yeah.
You know, but yeah, those would be the things, right, the, either sharing on the study, or sharing on whatever improvements are found to be recommended, you know, that's something else that can go down that road if, you know, we choose to not do the other path, or at the same time.
Maybe if you wouldn't mind, just kind of, tell, tell people what traffic calming options we were kind of thinking about, maybe.
Oh, sure. So, um, so things like striping the lanes at the minimum allowed width, instead of if they're currently twelve or thirteen feet wide, maybe you can stripe it at eleven feet wide and make the white fog line six inches wide instead of like a four inch standard wide line, which just gives a visual tighter restricted traffic while not actually making it more hazardous. You know, putting in like bump outs for, shortening the distance for crosswalks, but that would visually make vehicles see a constriction coming, and that can slow them down and just consistently.
A lot of cities do that one, I've noticed, yep.
Um, you know, you know, um, adding more crosswalks to have more of those, which is hazardous in other ways, but just another thing that can be done. Um, there's raised crosswalks that almost turn into like a
Speed bump?
A rough drive, but I'm pretty sure the county's not going to want to do that. Um, you could go all the way down to many roundabouts, you know, to really restrict the. Um, you could go all the way down to mini roundabouts, you know, to really restrict the, the path of all of it. Um, adding curb, you know, gives it a tighter feel. There's chain, chain of things that can be looked at and it's just which ones are going to be found to be the most cost effective and actually last. Because there's a lot of them out there that are, maybe it works for the, the first week and then everybody's just like, oh, well, that didn't do anything and ignore. So, um, that's what would be evaluated to kind of come up with recommendations.
Sure. Well, I mean, I know this was something that we probably were going to bring back to committee of the whole was basically to have this discussion. But, I mean, if you guys, I don't know what, if we can take any action on this or not tonight, but, uh, I mean, I would be in favor of at least approaching the county maybe to, to see if they'd want to share. I mean, that is a county road, but it's also, you know, half of ours basically with South Passage at that intersection. So, I mean, I'd be open to maybe seeing if they want to split some of that cost with, with the city to study those options.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we want Josie just reaching out or me to the county to ask that type of thing, or you guys to the board members.
Give them a call and see if that's something they would be.
Yes, I can reach out.
You said it's about, about five thousand for the study, probably?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know that road has been a, it's, it's been strange for, ever since I've been living here twenty years, I've been driving on it almost. And it's like, you always feel like you're going so slow, but you're still going fast. It's just the design of the road just doesn't work for a city type feel. Yeah.
Mayor and council, just, you mentioned there's two accidents, so just a little recap. So you guys have the information to go forward with. The first accident that had injuries involved, um, from our opinion, speed limit had no, the speed limit sign had no impact on whether that accident would have happened or not. Speed definitely had an impact, but whether there was a sign that was ten miles an hour, twenty, it wouldn't have made any difference in that, those scenario. The second one had to do with, uh, I did have a conversation with the driver of one of them. And I do believe if there was a slower speed coming into town, that may have changed that accident. So one, yes, and one, it wouldn't have changed, but it would have changed that one, I, I do believe. At least the factors that were expressed. If it was a slower speed coming into town, that would have had a different outcome on that second accident.
I do have another question for you, Travis. After the last message, I got a few, or the last meeting, I got a few messages, um, about speed enforcement. Could we request as a council to be a little bit more strict as a police department on the speed stuff? Because there's, I mean, we're having speed issues.
It depends on what you mean by more strict.
Well, less of a, uh, a cushion.
No.
No?
There's state statutes for quotas. You can't be, I, I can't directly or indirectly my officers to write a ticket.
Okay. So if they're going thirty-five, no matter what, if you're over the quota, you can't give a ticket?
No, what I'm telling you is me, you, nobody can directly or indirectly tell an officer to write a ticket or not write a ticket. So we, I can't tell my officers, you have to write a ticket.
Luke, weren't, weren't you like just a couple of months ago, wasn't he asking you to not have the, the officers like hiding sort of?
No, 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 no. No, I was asking on Highway sixty-five because it's dangerous.
We're consistent.
On Highway sixty-five only because it's dangerous. And that's a whole nother thing. I don't know if we should even be on Highway sixty-five because.
Maybe, maybe that's why we're not allowed to give them quotas because the quotas would change every, depending on.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying a quota by any means.
I know you're not.
But in the last meeting, he said eight miles per hour over the speed limit, we're not giving a ticket. And I, I don't think that's right.
I don't think, I don't think I said eight miles an hour, we are not giving a ticket. It's still up to the officer whether they give tickets. I was just trying to recap what I see come across the records. Yeah. I'm just kidding.
So by the numbers, it's eight miles per hour.
There is no number.
No.
Okay.
There is no number. And like I tried to educate the council last time, our job is to change behavior depending on the circumstances at hand. And one person may need a ticket in that officer's eyes and one may not. And me sitting behind the desk telling you how to do your job as an officer to change behavior doesn't work as well as it's illegal.
Okay. I just, I just know we get a lot of complaints about speeding and I don't know, there has, I'm trying to.
We lowered the speed limit on, uh, every road that we could down from thirty to twenty-five too, which I mean, that's something that we've recently done just within the last, I don't know if all those speed signs are out yet or not, but I think they probably are.
I'm not sure if they're all out, but they are going up.
Yeah.
Yep. We're doing them in kind of zones because we have to make sure on the same day we sign both ends of a street. So.
So that is something that, that we did do just within the last couple of months as well. So. And then we did talk, of course, about that sidewalk on whiskey, which I don't want to get into tonight. But, uh, if you, if you want to know more about why that hasn't been done and it's been talked about years and years and years and years. Um, so it's just a couple of residents there that don't want a sidewalk going through their yard. So, um, so yeah, so that's where that's at. But, but we're definitely working on it. Definitely something that we're trying to, trying to take care of our residents on and that kind of thing. So. Anything else you wanted to add to that discussion or?
Hope it was just, uh, the, the digital sign that was going to go up, but you already answered it. I think we're good.
All right. So we'll move on then to the consent agenda. Luke, do you want to thank anybody on that list?
Well, you got it this time.
All right, all right. So we had some donations come in. I think these were all for, um, the illuminated Isani. We've got Serenity Circle Counseling LLC, uh, Physical Therapy Consultants Inc. And Isani Tire and Auto Care Inc. all made some donations there. So I just wanted to, to thank them for that. And any other comments on the consent agenda? Any other questions that you guys have?
Motion to pay him.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries five zero. We are adjourned.